Twenty-third, 2017 to order. I personally and myself and the commissioners would like to welcome you. Thanks for coming down today. And I'm going to take this out of order, but I do, we have an exciting thing that's out now, the 2016 Annual Report for Nashville Next, which is on our front landing website that you can get an update on our award-winning Nashville Next plan. So make, I know all the commissioners have a copy of that, but it is available to the public on our website. So if you could, if you have any questions about that, let us know. And it is good reading. And so we'll go ahead and get started. First is the adoption of the agenda. The commissioners looked over the agenda. I need a motion to adopt. Any changes or edits or anything before we get a motion? Okay, we need a motion to adopt. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The agenda is adopted. Now to the approval of, we have two minutes that need to be approved, and they were sent out to you in advance, the January 26th and also the February 9th minutes, 2017 minutes. And we, any edits, additions? We'll need a motion to adopt those two particular minutes.
No edits?
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and those two minutes have been adopted. Now we are into the recognition of council members, and I'm just going to go in order as I saw y'all walk in. And I didn't recognize Councilman Sledge with his facial hair, but Councilman, welcome. Please come on up.
I appreciate it.
Another commissioner said that to me, too.
Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. Just a few items, all of which, to my knowledge, are either items for deferral or items on the consent agenda. Item number five, which is 2017 NHC 001-001, that is the, what was the proposed Hillview Heights-Inverness overlay. I'm asking that that be deferred indefinitely, as the neighbors continue to have conversations about that. We had a good conversation a few weeks ago about different kinds of overlays that were available to them. So they are having that internal discussion. And then there are two items, like I said, that I believe are still on the consent agenda. Item number 12, 2017 HL 002-001, that's the historic bed and breakfast district application on 906 Bradford, that I believe the applicant is here. I support this application. I think it's a good use of this historic property, and I think it'll be a great, it'll be a continuation of the use of this property. I think it's great to have this additional designation. And then finally, item number 15, 2016 Z 110 PR 001, that is being deferred to the March 9th Commission meeting, but we have an agreement between the application, the applicant and myself. So we'll be coming back to you on something that I do support. And I apologize, there is one more because that Councilman O'Connell's name on it. Item number 17, which is 2017 Z 020 PR 001, that is rezoning, a substantial part of Edge, the Edgehill neighborhood from R6 to R6A. Councilman O'Connell and I both worked with the neighborhood, and several of the residents are here today. I think it's some basic but needed design guidelines for the neighborhood that they have asked us to do and had kind of approved within their neighborhood association. So I would appreciate your support on all those items, and I thank you again for your service.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate you coming down. Councilman Nick Leonardo, please come on up. Welcome, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, members of the Commission. I have item agenda number nine, and I believe it was pulled off the consent agenda a little earlier, but I'm here to announce that we'd like to have it placed back on, and Mr. White can confirm that. And we would like to move forward with the bill that has been, which the department's recommended approval on. We've been talking, we'll continue to talk throughout the process, but at this point in time, we'd like to place it back on the consent agenda. And I do appreciate your service as well, and I think Mr. White can confirm.
Councilman, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom White.
Mr. White.
I certainly concur with the comments. We've made some progress in trying to get this resolved. We have three readings at the Council, where hopefully we can make it there. So we have no objection to it being on consent today. Thank you.
Excellent. We appreciate your work and working together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Means a lot. All right, I saw Councilman Scott Davis as well, but I think he might be, he's outside, so we'll just, he always wait, he generally waits, so we'll, any, I didn't see any other council members. All right, so we are on the next item, which is item E, items for deferral withdrawal.
Okay, there are several items for deferral, starting with item number one. This is case 2016 Z-024 TX-001. This is a request to amend Chapter 17.04, 1720, and 1740 of the zoning code pertaining to sidewalks, and staff recommendation is to defer to the March 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item three, which is case 2016 SP-098-001. This is a request to rezone from an existing SP to a new SP zoning on property located at 910-912 North Second Street, at the corner of Cleveland Street and North Second Street, to permit uses limited to one single family or two, or one two-family unit. And the recommendation is to defer to the March 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item four, case 2017 SP-019-001. This is a request to rezone from AR2A to SP zoning for property located at 3461 Hamilton Church Road, to permit 158 residential units. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item five, case 2017 NHC-001-001. This is a request to apply a neighborhood conservation overlay district on various properties along Hillview Heights, Cisco Street, and Inverness Avenue, and along the, at the northeast of Ball Lane and Dewey's Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. Next item is item six, case 2016 S-253-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots and for a variance from the subdivision regulations for sidewalk requirements for property located at 1601 Jones Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item seven, case 2017 S-010-001. This is a request for subdivision amendment approval to amend the plat on property located at 5959 Edmondson Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item eight, case 2017 S-012-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located at 1227 Old Hickory Boulevard in Council District III. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 23rd Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 11, case 2017 SP-012-001. This is a request to rezone from R15 to SP zoning on property located at 730 Old Hickory Boulevard, to permit up to 53 residential units. And the staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. This is in Council District 22. Next item is item 13, case 2017 S-043-001. This is the Trail Hollow subdivision, which is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 3501 Trail Hollow Lane, at the northeast corner of Trail Hollow Lane and Brick Church Lane. And staff recommendation is to defer to the March 23rd meeting. Next item on the consent agenda is item 15, case...
The deferral agenda.
Sorry, the deferral agenda, sorry. Item 15, case 2016 Z-110 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R8 to R6A zoning for property located at 1015 Summit Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 18, case 2017 Z-021 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R8, R10, R15, and RS10 on various properties along Foothill Drive, Hollydale Drive, Deervale Drive, Shady Oak Drive, and Giant Oak Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting. And the last item is item 19, case 2017 S-035-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots and for a variance from the subdivision regulations for sidewalk requirements for property located at 5024 Trousdale Drive. Staff recommendation is to defer to the March 9th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Bob. So let's, we'll go through this kind of slow, so make sure we get it right. So it's items number one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 11, 13, 15, 18, and 19. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the list. Any, any questions? Is there a motion for deferral, withdrawal, in withdrawal?
There's a motion.
Has been a motion, and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The items have been deferred. We're on to item F, consent.
Yes, and before I get to the consent, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items, unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items, please raise your hand if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. Starting with item number nine, case 2017 UD-001-001. This is the Whites Creek at Lloyd Road, UDO. This is a request to apply an urban design overlay district on various properties located along Clarksville Pike, Buena Vista Pike, Dry Fork Road, and Lloyd Road, at the southeast corner of Lloyd Road and Clarksville Pike. And the staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 10, case 2017 CP-005-001. This is a request to amend the East Nashville Community Plan by amending the community character policy from, to change from T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving to T4 Urban Neighborhood Maintenance on various properties in East Hill and Mayner Place neighborhoods. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item on the consent is item 12, case 2017 HL-002-001. This is a request to apply a historic bed and breakfast district on property located at 906 Bradford Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 14, case 2013 UD-002-008. This is a request for a modification to the Murphysboro Pike Urban Design Overlay District standards on property located at 3754 Murphysboro Pike, to permit a modification of the frontage width and cross-access requirements. Staff recommendation is to approve. And I'll note on item 14 that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself. Next item is item 17, case 2017 Z-020 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from R6 to R6A zoning on property along Sigler Street, Hawkins Street, South Street, Music Square, Tremont Street, Edgehill Avenue, Horton Avenue, Wade Avenue, Villa Place, 15th Avenue South, 14th Avenue South, and 13th Avenue South. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item under other business, item 20, is a contract renewal for Mica Taylor. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item is item 24, accept the director's report and approve administrative items. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Remove 10.
And we just got a request to have item 10 removed from the consent, the East Hill, Mayner Place Community Plan Amendment.
Can, the person wanting to pull item 10, can you raise your hand, please? Thank you. Thank you.
So you want me to read through those?
Yes.
Yes, Bob.
Read through those again.
The items on the consent are items number nine, number 12, number 14, and number 17, number 20, and number 24.
All right, everyone, you heard the items for the consent. We'll need a motion. Any questions? We'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second, any discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The consent agenda has passed. So for everyone in the audience, that means that we are considering items number two. Make sure I'm right on this, Bob, everybody, because I want to make sure everybody's good. So the items that you'll hear now are the ones that we will be considering. Everything else has been taken care of. So it'll be items number two, 10, and 16. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes, that's correct.
That's correct. And so, item number two, let's do the presentation. If everybody could exit out quietly, we really appreciate it, so we can get started. Go ahead.
Next item on this evening's agenda is item two. This is a request to rezone property located at 1021 Elvira Avenue from R6 to SP, to permit six residential units, and the subject parcel is highlighted in red. Staff's recommendation is to reopen the public hearing, approve of conditions, and disapprove without all conditions. The site is located approximately 275 feet northwest of Gallatin Pike and contains .49 acres of land. The site is currently zoned R6, which is intended for single-family dwellings and two-family duplexes. The site plan proposes a total of six units. The site is accessed by a central driveway, which serves all of the units. Two units will front Elvira Avenue, and the remaining four units will front interior courtyard space on the site plan. The height is limited to three stories and 35 feet. Sidewalks will be included along Elvira with a four-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk. To address the previous comments made by the planning commissioners, the height and mass of the structures have been reduced in order to reduce the impact upon surrounding parcels and structures and increase the amount of open space on the site. The entrance driveway has been altered to preserve the mature trees on the site, and the plan includes architectural standards for primary entrances, glazing, raised foundations, porches, and building materials. Each unit will contain a two-car garage. Four guest parking spaces are included at the rear of the site, and the sidewalks will make a connection to the existing sidewalk along Gallatin Pike. The policy for the site is T4 Urban Neighborhood Evolving, which is intended to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods that provide more housing choice, improved connectivity, and moderate-to-high density development patterns with shallow setbacks and minimal spacing between buildings. It is important to note that this evening's agenda contains a community plan amendment, and if approved, we change the policy for this site from urban neighborhood evolving to urban neighborhood maintenance. Staff has reviewed this SP under both policies and found it to be consistent with both policies. This SP achieves two critical planning goals: it supports infill development and creates walkable neighborhoods. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to reopen the public hearing, approve of conditions, and disapprove without all conditions, as this SP is consistent with policy and achieves two critical planning goals.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing, and the applicant, I believe, is the councilman, council? Is that correct? I believe that's correct. Or, oh, the applicant, come on up. You have 10 minutes. I wanted to make sure. Thank you, Councilman.
I want to speak after you.
Absolutely, for sure. You have 10 minutes, and if you want to reserve part of that, two minutes of the 10, you can, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Just want to touch on the comments that were made. Previously, it was requested that we have an adequate right-of-way sidewalk, prefered a five-foot sidewalk, and we have proposed a one-foot right-of-way, four-foot planning strip, and five-foot sidewalk. And we've also added our rain gardens to the front of the property to allow for a better green curb appeal. Secondly, we had requested timeline of the build-out. This will be in three phases of two homes, and the objective is to have all six simultaneously built at one time within a one-year time period. We had, let's see, we had, to address the affordability, we decreased the unit sizes. Let's see here, yeah, we decreased the unit sizes, and that's down to a maximum of 1,600 square feet with two-car garages. And secondly, given the density that we are allowed, we can offer these at a more affordable price, because we're dispersing the actual land cost acquisition and the site work cost over six units instead of the two that's currently proposed. We added an additional 5% to the green space, and along with keeping five of the six mature trees, and that was a big, a big topic in the last hearing, and the only tree that we are not saving is actually a deceased decayed tree, so we're able to keep all five mature live trees on-site. That's, that's, that's it.
Thank you. We'll make sure they have two minutes for your rebuttal. I appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the project? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come up to the microphone, and you'll have two minutes, and please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rebecca. Four lines live at 1023 Elvira, which is the property immediately next door. I spoke on this item last time it was up, went a few months ago, whenever that was. I appreciate some of the efforts to change the plan and some of the concerns that y'all had, and some of the concerns that I had as well. The only thing I really have to say is, you know, it seems like there is zoning for a reason. It seems like there is a reason why we plan cities in a certain way, we plan neighborhoods in a certain way, and in order to deviate from that, it seems like there would need to be an excessive pressing and really necessary goal to make that change, and I don't know that that is here. The changes that my neighborhood has seen drastically over and over and over again, it's every day you come home, there is something new that is changing, as is influencing the item agenda number 10, to move from evolving to maintenance. It's just, there's massive frenetic, chaotic changes that are not done in accordance or consideration with each other. Their properties, you know, the existing properties on my street were mostly single-family homes, one-stories, large lots. The things that are going on now, it's like, no longer is one house enough, two houses aren't enough, six houses on one lot is what we're going to do, where there was one 900-square-foot house beforehand. And I appreciate seeing these plans now. Just as a side note, it would have been nice and considerate if I had have seen these beforehand, with the awareness of, hey, you live right next door, we're going to try to put six houses where one house currently is. Let me tell you about why we think that's a good idea. I still don't necessarily think that it's a good idea. I understand they've made some adjustments to the concerns that we had, and that's great, but I still don't know that it's really something that's necessary, or seems to have good enough reason to change from existing zoning standards. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The applicant, you'll have, seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal. If you would like.
First and foremost, I'd just like to say that I do honor her take on the situation, and it's, density is something that I think we all are trying to work with right now and establish in our growing city. I think the, the largest issue that we have right now, that I hear as a developer, is affordability. The quickest way that we can get ahead of ourselves in affordability is to add density. Density will allow us to overcome the lack of supply that we currently have due to the demand on our, on our current area. If we're as concerned about affordability as it seems, we add density, and with density, we'll add more competitive pricing, and we'll eventually get our area more affordable. Without density, we are left with $500,000 and $600,000 houses in neighborhoods like hers to make sense of the lot. So I do value what she had, what she had to say, and I just, what we're working on is to allow more density, and with density, we'll allow more competitive pricing on the back end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing anyone else to speak? We declare the public hearing. Oh, that's right. Yeah, come on up, Council. I promise that was not on purpose. Thanks for coming down, sir.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for volunteering your time. Thank you, planning staff, for always working hard and doing overtime without extra pay. Thank you for what you do. Originally looking at this, you know, I was not in support of this. And, you know, I like the density, I like that they've made the changes to the current plan. You know, the neighbor, Ms. Fourlines, very knowledgeable, wanted some changes done, and I'm glad the developer made the changes. More importantly, though, what I'm wanting to focus on, and I don't know if we can, you know, I know staff is recommending approval with conditions. This is an area that's stressed. Let's just go with the planning commission's recommendations. Well, I want to go with the staff's recommendation. However, though, I would like to put the caveat in there that, that, you know, that the developer inside of the SP, when I was reviewing over Ms. Anita's shoulder, has one affordable unit in there, and with the give or take, if he adds another one, does it meet whether the bill, bill number 387-2017 for those requirements? You know, I'm not sure if it meets that. But with that, adding the density to get more affordability, then adding that language in there, he's already added one affordable unit in the, in the SP. And more importantly, you know, I mean, I would like for him to meet that, that requirement, you know, in order to get my support. And I think he does with the one, but I'm not Metro Legal, you know? But Ms. Allen, if you can help me with that bill number? I believe in the report down there, you know, it has one of the units hitting that. If I could set the AMI for that one unit, especially putting a neighbor that's been displaced in there, one thing we've discussed about, and Metro Legal is about to make a ruling in our favor, is that we can use private contracts to put people that are displaced back into the neighborhoods. And one way of doing it, and I'm not perfect, there's plenty of lawyers on the council, and I'm sorry, on the commission right here, something about a covenant running with the land, which does not make Metro liable, but it makes it enforceable, you know, through a private contract through the developer, so that people can have that affordable unit. And if the developer sells that piece of property to somebody else, it's like, I'm not going to build that unit for that wonderful person. By having the covenant running with the land gets rid, gets rid of that fear. And I don't want to slow this process down anymore. Both sides have worked very hard, and I'm also here in support of our next bill, our next policy amendment on Elvira. I have some concerns, but majority of the neighbors have spoken and wanting that, and so we'll go with it. But I want to stress the affordability aspect of this, and voluntarily, they're willing to do one unit. If we can match the requirements with that, I want to, I want to push this through. And I don't know if your note, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot, I don't know if, if the notes that the, that the staff have match the ones that you guys have, the young men and women up here have, you know? But isn't that in there that it needs to match with five bill number? I forget the bill number, because there's so many.
I'm not sure, I don't recall the exact bill number for the affordable housing legislation.
Yeah.
It's 2017.
It's 2016-133.
133.
Okay.
Okay. The staff notes are that the one affordable unit does not comply with that, but if we do the AMI, I believe, depending on the number, that it will meet the percentage threshold. If we can make that tweak, which we've done in many other pieces of legislation that have passed through this body.
Well, our recommendation does state that one of the units will be affordable
Yes.
Or workforce housing unit, and gives the percentage of the total units. But I would point out that it says, how will you enforce the affordability requirements? And it says to be determined. And so, at this stage, I don't really know how that is going to be enforced.
We're enforcing it for the one on Hillsborough and the one that we just passed, about six months ago. You know, I mean, we are enforcing those. You know, I mean, so we were able to force it for that one on Hillsborough near Bell Court. Now, come on, I know you do a million cases, but, you know, we've, we're...
Councilman, what we'll do is, I believe that this commission has been on record many, many, many times about affordability, and we will do as much as we can to enforce it. And you as council, but it's a very complex issue. But I believe that the staff recommendation includes, you know, that that's what the intent of that is. Enforcability is an issue, so, but we will do everything that we can within our legal parameters, if that makes sense. Right? Right, Mr. Director?
We will work with the legal department to, if there is a way for us to ensure that one of those units is affordable and that that's what the applicant seems to be agreeing to, then we'll work with the legal department to try to fashion a way to make it enforceable.
Okay. No problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, councilman. We appreciate it. Seeing no other speakers, we declare the public hearing closed. How about Commissioner Cliff? Commissioner Mike?
I had a question about the density. So the current zoning already allows for six units, is that right?
That's correct.
So there's not six units right now, but there could already be six units under the current zoning?
Potentially, if they were to subdivide the property.
Got you. So it doesn't seem like the SP, approving this SP is increasing the ability to have units on this land, because it's already, you're already able to have up to six units on the land. The SP, I'm assuming, is being done for design purposes?
Yes.
So, I mean, I hear the neighbor's concern about increased density, but we're not changing the ability to have six units that's already here, and I think it's kind of telling that the SP, as it's proposed, is in compliance with, or by some people's perspective, at least, in compliance with not only the current policy, but the proposed policy of neighborhood maintenance. So...
That's correct.
So, I mean, I absolutely hear the neighbor's concern. I still think, on balance, that this would be an appropriate place to have this type of density, especially since the current zoning already allows up to six units. So I would be in favor of approving the plan, and I think the affordable housing question is something that's still an open issue that perhaps we will get worked out at a later date.
Commissioner Diaz? Councilwoman?
I have several comments. I certainly support the council member in doing what we can to make this comply with 133 now that we've remembered the number, so I'm happy to work with him on finding out what else we can do to get that to become an official part of this. If you could just comment, I think we've already answered the question, how this fits under neighborhood maintenance when it looks different from what much of the street looks like? Can you just kind of elaborate on that?
Yes, so neighborhood maintenance, the policy does state that neighborhoods will evolve and change over time, that will experience some change, and when that's done, we do try to take into account some consistency with the existing structures. And I believe I did not mention this, but the proposed structures do keep the appropriate setback for both existing structures on to the east and west. And I believe, if I were to go back, you would be able to see that in previous slides, but as you can see here, that setback is being, for the most part, maintained. Also, we are achieving a critical planning goal of increasing connectivity and walkability. That's being done by sidewalk connection, which will contain the entire frontage of this parcel and will create a connection to the existing sidewalk along Gallatin Pike.
Okay, great, thank you. And I think this is a question for the builder. I appreciate saving trees, and he said he was gonna say five, and I only see four on the drawing. Can we get the drawing altered to show that fifth tree?
Let's, if the applicant would come up.
So if I'm looking at that one right, I see four dark ones.
We have one that's actually on the property line right here.
If you could take that to the council lady.
Yeah, count those for me. One, two, three, four. So that one should be dark as well.
I'm pretty sure this one right here is, the way we had to move this around this tree right here, he just didn't label it.
Okay.
That's the reason why we had to move.
We can get that, we can get that changed, though. Five, okay, great. I'm circling it. Okay.
Counsel lady, if I can, just so we get the record clear, which tree are we talking about?
If you look at the curve in the road...
Yes.
There's a lighter tree shown there to the right.
Okay, on the west side of the...
Correct.
Okay. So it's there in the curve, just to the west and to the south of the two trees that are highlighted. Okay. And we'll make sure that we note that that's the fifth tree that would be saved.
Actually, the one that you pointed to, I think, was on the other side of the road.
On the right side as you were...
On the right side, as you go up. That one, that one.
Okay, so it's on the, so on the east side just before the bend, next to the center tree that's being saved.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll note that.
Great. And again, I support the affordability component, that any way we can make that happen, I appreciate. That, I certainly understand the neighbor's concern, I guess because this one's closer to the corridor and they've made most of the concessions that were asked for, I think I will support the council member on this one.
Thank you, council lady. Commissioner Hagen? Chairman?
I don't know.
All right, we'll need a motion.
Motion's approved with staff recommendations. The staff are trying to work out the language for the enforcement of the affordable unit.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? There's been a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posna, ayes have it. It's adopted. We are on to item number 10.
Okay. Let's see, I'll get this. See, it's your turn.
I think so. I see this. Chairman, your mic's on.
Okay. This is policy change. I say, you agree.
Ready? Okay. This is item number 10, is this Neighborhood Association has initiated request to amend the East National Community Plan for the portions of East Hill and Maynor Place neighborhoods that are shown in the map here. The request is to change from urban neighborhood evolving to urban neighborhood maintenance for approximately 62 acres. The amendment area boundary is shown in red, and this area, of course, is generally located to the northwest of the intersection of Gallatin Pike and Trinity, East Trinity. You'll see in the next slide here, the area again shown, with the staff, of course, recommendation being approval, but you can see that the council district line is along Maynor Avenue. So this is split between two councilmember Davis and councilmember Van Reese. Current policy is neighborhood evolving, which, of course, supports a mix of housing at moderate to high densities in neighborhoods that are planned to evolve over time. And note also that it includes existing conservation policy that we are not, or that's not being proposed to change. Zoning for the area is a mix of R6 located south of Maynor and RS 7.5 to the north. Of course, RS 6 allowing lots, single-family, or excuse me, one and two-family residential with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, and RS 7.5 allowing single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet. Much of the redevelopment that's taken place over the last several years that you heard just previously from one of the speakers has taken place in the R6-zoned area. The amendment area has absorbed, like I said, a substantial amount of growth. Eighty-six new residential permits have been issued just since January 1st, 2014. Of course, this has drastically changed the way several streets look. In addition to that, several developers have expressed formal and informal interest in develop redevelopment projects that would increase that intensity and offer different types of housing types as well. And of course, the planning commission has heard various iterations of the zoning project or zoning requests for the area, the terminus of Elvira, and I'll get to that a little bit more in a second. This slide starts to give you an impression of the way the change that's happened in this area since January 2014. Blue symbols representing the new housing, or the new residential permits that have been issued, the red line, of course, still being the amendment area. Primarily situations where existing homes were torn down and removed with, removed and then replaced with two homes. I'm gonna show you a couple of slides here just to give you another look at what that means to the area for this Thomas Avenue. This is from 2014 aerial, again, showing the blue houses representing areas that are lots where new building permits were issued in 2014. And then just flip over to 2016, this was winter last year, 2016, so there's been even more construction since then, but you can see the, I'll go back and forth one more time, before, after, in that one little area, the way that the community has changed. In addition to analyzing the area, staff worked with the community, with councilmember Scott Davis and Nancy Van Reese, property owners, neighborhood associations. We initially added this, following the request from East Hill Neighborhood Association, we added this to the list of ideas we were considering for the overall policy review for District 5. We ultimately pulled that, pulled this area from that in order to have one more public meeting back in January of this year. The community input we've received so far include everything from emails, phone calls, and also some checking out the social media posts that the neighborhood associations have been posting. Overall, we've received 36, or input from 36 area residents, including 25 that were representing properties within the amendment area. Of course, most people that we've heard from have supported the amendment, and similar to what you've heard at previous public hearings. Speaking of previous public hearings, the recent zoning request that you last heard in, I believe it was November 16th last year, whenever you saw this as a regulatory SP and recommended disapproval. During all of that, of course, the input that we received was a snapshot into a lot of the issues that we've heard for this area as we've been working on the plan amendment. And so, given the interest in this area, we paid particular attention to it and to what the impacts would be by changing the policy for future development on this parcel. We did special attention ourselves, obviously, but then also expressing that to the community to make sure they were aware that just because we were changing this policy, that doesn't mean that something wouldn't happen on that property that might be somewhat more intense than what they're used to seeing. So just a sample of what we were explaining to the community, I'll show the slides here, the idea that evolving areas have an expressed interest in evolving to the new character that will include a mixture of housing types, greater connectivity with higher densities in surrounding area. Meanwhile, the maintenance areas where policy is applied, there's an expressed interest in maintaining the character. So the big difference, we always tell the community, and Anita, I look to her whenever I say this, but it's maintain, maintain versus, you know, just evolving. We've titled them very well with those titles for that reason. And continuing, what we've paid special attention to, even more special attention to, was the infill provisions and making sure that they understood those and that, once again, that the opportunities would remain for the development of the property on Elvira at a somewhat higher intensity, as long as it fits in with the community, and especially how it interacts on the street with the existing development. So as we were going through this process, some property owners, the larger property owners, asked us to exclude Elvira Avenue. And as we were considering that, we went through a lot of information and talking to different community members. We actually reached out and along with the community associations, reached out to folks on Elvira Avenue, trying to generate more input. And in the process of doing that, we, of course, the first point here, bullet on the board here, says that, you know, we haven't received any development proposal thus far that was consistent with the existing policy. So it's not really fair to compare, if you're the property owners, the rights that you would have with something that hasn't been approved yet. So we just wanted to set that record straight, not only here, but any with the community when we were talking to them. The second part, that the community input's been overwhelming, a vast majority of folks have told us they've supported it, and I'll get a little bit more specific on that in just a second. The other part, property owners are gonna retain their existing entitlements, the tearing down one house, building two, where that's possible, that continues to be possible in the future, so no one's going to lose those rights. And of course, the infill policy for maintenance will continue to allow, as I mentioned earlier, properties around Elvira Avenue, the terminus of Elvira, to redevelop. And then speaking of Elvira, we, like I said, we reached out to Elvira residents, we ended up with 16 residents representing properties on it with Elvira Avenue addresses, and I guess representing 14 parcels. And 11 said they supported, and then five showed us, or showed opposition to that, that represented six parcels. And I'll note that one of those in opposition said so because he felt that the capital improvements budget, the priority for projects in the capital improvements budget, might lower the priority for sidewalk projects in the neighborhood if it were changed to maintenance, which that's not the case. That's not on the list of priority criteria for the capital improvements budget. So with that in mind, we recommend that we include, we continue to include Elvira in the recommendation area, and with that, we also recommend approval of the plan amendment.
Thank you very much. We'll open this item for public hearing. And in this case, the applicant is actually the council member, and so, councilman, would you like to come up and present? And/or are we, oh, us?
We're...
Oh, we're the applicant.
I believe we're on the same page.
Doug has advised me wrong again. So, but we're on the same page, I believe, so the planning commission is actually applicant, and so we just presented.
Well, this is, this is, let's clarify something. I allowed other areas in my community to do a policy amendment. To be fair, you know, to all areas, the neighbors on this side wanted to do one also. There are some in opposition, some in support. And I cannot deny that to other neighbors and not allow other neighbors to do the same thing. The problem with this, I am, just so I'm clear, I am in support of this policy amendment. You know, do I need to say it again? I am in support of this policy amendment. But this is why I am in support of this policy amendment. You know, people stepped back and people calmed down. You know, people went and got the facts, and they went to each of the neighbors on the Elvira. Now, what makes me more comfortable with this is when talking to Anita and her staff and other planning staffers, and this young man right here who did an excellent job at a community meeting, you know, who, once again, they worked overtime and after-hours on this. And they, and I'm not saying it was not a guarantee, but they understood the needs of my neighbor who lives and owns that big parcel, who's lived there for over 25 years, who is, who's right now, their family is, they're over 40, and not making this slide, but when you get 40s and up, you start thinking about retirement. The neighbors want them to retire comfortably. They've helped clean that area up, they've been longtime neighbors, and I don't know whose fault it is, they did not know that they were members of a certain neighborhood association. However, what planning staff has done since then, but... of my neighbor who lives and owns that big parcel, who's lived there for over 25 years, who, who is, who's right now, their family is, they're over 40, and not making this slide, but after, when you get 40s and up, you start, you start thinking about retirement. The neighbors want them to retire comfortably. They've helped clean that area up. They've been longtime neighbors. And I don't know whose fault it is, they did not know that they were members of a certain neighborhood association. However, what planning staff has done, since that butts up against a railroad track, since that's behind the East Recycling Center, you know, they are comfortable and translating maintenance will allow something more intense back there. So, so my neighbor, who we care about so much, they don't lose their right. Now, I support, you know, people disagree respectfully, you know, but considering that planning took the time to consider what they need and what some of the folks over here needed, I thought it was a good compromise. And Bob Lehman did a great job. Bob Lehman came out to the site and Bob got it. This is butted up against the back of a railroad track. This is a large piece of parcel land. And once again, the developer, I can't push this hard enough, was trying to look at affordability. Doing research, can we do a contract? Can we put people that are displaced from the neighborhood? And it was funny to me, watching folks who are living in tall skinnies, you know, against this development, because I had neighbors that said, well, we want something more four, we want something smaller, we want something, you know, I mean, bigger, because townhomes were bigger than the average tall skinny on those streets. So it was kind of, you know, mind numbing for a while there. And people wanted more sidewalks and other improvements. So I think this is a good compromise. You know, even though I'm going to be supporting my neighbor who has the larger parcels, they're still going to keep one property that had one house there, but with the larger parcel against the railroad tracks, my, I've always had faith in the planning staff, but Anita and this young man over here, I keep forgetting your name, have renewed my faith and made it stronger, that they will make sure that she is not trampled on. And I know she has a sign, and I feel bad, you know, I mean, that, you know, that majority of the neighbors are not wanting this to go evolving or stay evolving, you know, but we've had, we've won here, both sides have. And doing a development with, you know, between 100 units, 100, 100 to 120 units, focusing just on her property, because she lives there, that is my constituent also. And we want to help them and we want to keep everything right, but I just can't compliment the hard work of both Anita and this young man, who I'll probably know the name after today, and how hard they worked and how active my neighbors have been at East Hill. You know, neighbors on both sides have been just a lovely gem of information, Whitney, Ruben, all of them, I just can't thank them enough. And this has also helped push the, the nimbyism and the yimbyism back and forth. And I think we got a yimby here now.
Thank you, Councilman.
And that's what I want to say. And just, I can't, Doug, I cannot compliment your staff enough for the work that they did.
Thank you, sir.
Marty stood a great job.
Marty.
Thank you.
And I didn't realize that Bob's apparently the applicant.
Bob is the applicant.
Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project, please come forward. You have two minutes to speak and please state your name and your address. And then we'll do opposition after the support.
Hey, y'all, my name is Whitney Pastorek. I live at 917A Spain Avenue, and I'm representing both the East Hill Neighborhood Association as well as the Maynor Place Neighborhood Association. And I personally would also like to thank Anita and Marty for all the time that they took in explaining this plan to us and giving us all of our options. And I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Nancy Van Reese, who's been instrumental in the process, as well as Councilman Scott Davis, for sitting with us and talking this through. And as everyone's mentioned, you know, the neighborhood is overwhelmingly in favor of this. And we really, after so much change in the three years, as was indicated on the slide since 2014, everybody just sort of does want this to be the kind of single-family neighborhood that we all moved into when we got there. We recognize that there are going to be changes, there are going to be six units on one lot sometimes if the zoning permits it, and whatever's going to happen with the giant Elvira parcel, you know, what will be, will be, we just hope we can come to something that everybody can agree on. And if I can, I want to use my last minute of time just to address my neighbor Teresa, who's in the room. Teresa, I know.
Please, you got to talk.
Okay, I know Teresa's really upset with us, with the East Hill Neighborhood Association in particular, because she feels that she's been railroaded. And obviously, they do have a great financial interest in their piece of land being sold to a developer so that they can retire comfortably as they deserve. And none of us are trying to stop that. And I can't say it enough times how much we value them as our neighbors, how much we will continue to value them even in their absence, and how much we intend to be great stewards of both East Hill and Maynor moving into the future as the new generation of homeowners and families starts to move in. That's all your time that I'll take up. Thank you guys so much for your attention.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. You have two minutes and please state your name and your address.
My name is Teresa Cogdal. I live and reside at 911 Elvira for over 20 years. Also own 909A, 909B, and 900 Maynor, and 914 Elvira, which if I do sell the connected properties, I will be keeping 914, and that will always be my neighborhood, even when I move away. I've been born and raised here all my life. When I first moved there, it was not a desirable neighborhood. Nashville Next Plan came into play. They have our neighborhood evolving, and Elvira is doing exactly what it should be doing. It should be evolving. Most of the houses that were torn down needed to be torn down. We had prostitutes on the street, we had drug dealers on the street. I've been through all of that. We are evolving. Nashville is growing. Gentrification is here. A lot of the people that are moving here are causing, you know, us to grow, which that's a good thing for Nashville and our community. I think good things are going to come to Elvira. Elvira is close to the bus lines. We need to keep on evolving. And as far as the East Hill Neighborhood Association, I do not consider myself to be a part of that. I knew nothing about it till the sign went up on the street. I actually made a phone call to the mayor's office yesterday, trying to find out what local government is even over these neighborhood associations, and no one knew. I'm waiting on a call back to find out, because I don't think I was notified for the neighborhood association to take over on my street. That is my street. It's not people that have been implanted here and only been in Nashville for a year or two. They don't know my neighborhood. I know it. I've born and raised there all my life. Elvira needs to keep evolving. Please let Elvira keep evolving. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And Chairman, you want to go first?
I will. One question, staff. If it's R six, the density doesn't change, it's just the size of the lot that'd be involved, whether you'd get two units or four units. Is that correct? I mean, R six doesn't, if it's R six now, you're not changing any zoning.
Right, correct. When no zoning involved, that's it.
Would this allow multifamily on any of the larger properties?
Potentially, depending on the development.
Not on the current zoning, that's R.
I'm sorry, yes, that is correct. Thank you for that.
So it's not really zoning change, it's just policy change?
Just, just policy change, that'll speak to any zoning applications that we see in the future, but it doesn't change the existing R six and I believe it's RS on the north side. Yeah, that or May.
That's all.
Appreciate you.
Just one quick question, or I guess point. When you showed the drastic change, I guess, when you go from neighborhood evolving to neighborhood maintenance, it's almost like you've evolved, right? So, so if we're looking at neighborhood maintenance now, if it becomes a neighborhood maintenance, has the, and you look at the language, it's, you know, neighborhood maintenance is expressed intent to maintain existing character. I guess we have to think about, has the existing character changed to the point that it's really not, I mean, that when we review, you see what I'm trying to get to, is that our baseline has changed. So we're not talking about, and I see that, I hear both neighbors and I understand both concerns. I've lived in East Nashville and from '05 to 2013, I totally understand where they're both coming from. I don't think it's as, as protective as some think it might be, and I don't think it's as drastic of a change the other way as the current homeowner, who just spoke against it, thinks it may be either, because by the fact that it's changed so much in the last couple of years, your baseline has changed. Am I, am I correct in that?
Right, you could certainly have a neighborhood that was neighborhood evolving for a period of time and have a development pattern that has worked its way through the neighborhood enough that it becomes neighborhood maintenance. I'm not entirely sure that that's really what's happened here. I think it was that this neighborhood is okay with the level of change that they're seeing today. I just don't think, from the conversations that we've seen, that they want that to intensify beyond what they're seeing today.
And I understand that.
And I don't mean to speak for the neighborhood, but that just seems to be.
You're slowing it, you're trying to catch it before the tip, it tips to the point.
Right. And there were applications before to introduce multifamily. And then I think that that was what brought the community together to say, is that really what we want? No, it's not. At least the majority of them seemed to say, no, it's not that we want to continue to grow as we've been growing and not have it become more intense than that. And so we believe that this neighborhood, neighborhood maintenance designation will help to, to foster that.
And I, I mean, I'm, as a former East Nashvillian who lived, who was an Edgefield Neighborhood Association person, I, I'm for policy change. I think the zoning, there's no zoning change, it's a policy change, and it makes sense to me.
Chairman, you got a question?
This change doesn't affect the item two that we just approved, does it?
No.
Okay.
Counselor.
Thank you. Can you go back? You had the list of comparisons of neighborhood evolving and neighborhood maintenance. I'm just, would like to see one more time the, maybe, yeah, I think that's it, primarily. There's a, there's a reference to large and undeveloped lots. Can you go to that one? Recognizes that some maintenance, okay, under maintenance, that some maintenance areas may include areas of vacant, underutilized, or land in non-residential use that could develop. Can you sort of elaborate on what the potential for that? I think it's important both for the owner and for the neighbors to be, to be clear that because that's a big lot, that it, what the potential there could look like.
What they could do is propose a variety of housing types that might not be exactly the same, the single family that surrounds it. They could have a little higher intensity, but it would need to blend at the street at Elvira. They would need to have a design that would blend in with the area.
But because it's bigger than the others, there's, there's more flexibility for that particular lot. I think that's an important point in satisfying, or at least ameliorating the concerns of the, the owner of the larger piece of property. I know how much this neighborhood has, has been discussing this issue, and I feel like the, the council member and the staff have worked well to try to come up with something that it looks to me like will, will work for them. I'm going to support the change to neighborhood maintenance.
Commissioner Lee is.
I think we're all trying to clarify some, the same thing. I guess what I just, you know, wanted to make clear is that you still get the same density. It's just going to be a little bit more work with the design process whenever you have a plan, right? It's going to be the same, you still, you can still build the two houses in one lot and, you know, the density is all the same.
And that's, that's based on existing entitlements.
Right, right. So the entitlements do not change. Okay, so that's, you know, I think everybody needs to know that and, you know, and I think that's what we're all trying to say. And for that reason, I, I support this, because it'll just be something that everybody can look at together and kind of, maintenance gives a little bit more, I guess, room for community input. And I think this would be great for this location, especially since we've seen a lot of cases recently where it has, you know, because of that same area that a lot of people don't agree with. So I think this will help that communication more.
Commissioner Blackshear? We'll need a motion.
Got a motion to approve the staff's recommendations.
There's been a motion to approve staff recommendation. Any discussion and a second, any discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But there's no ayes have it and is adopted. Now we are on item number sixteen.
This is a request to rezon property located at various addresses along with Seal Street. The subject parcels are outlined in red. Staff's recommendation is to approve. The site is located 75 feet west of Elmhurst Avenue and contains 1.66 acres. The site is currently zoned RS five, which is intended for single-family dwellings with a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet. The current policy for the site is T four urban neighborhood evolving, which is intended to create enhanced urban neighborhoods that fit with the general character of existing neighborhoods with opportunities for housing choice and improved connectivity. In conclusion, staff's recommendation is to approve as the request is consistent with policy.
And is the applicant in the audience? Anyone here wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Sir, come on up and give us your name and your address, and you have two minutes, sir.
My name is Thomas Gray. We've got a gentleman out there called Matthew Sreda, who's been in our area out there. And what has happened, I run a janitorial service at Brick Church Pike. And what they did out there, he changed the title. In other words, he got a no survey and changed the title, and also got a title deed. I got a title deed when I bought the property from Moncrey's years ago at 1225 Brick Church Pike. I had told Metro about that, but they seemed to ignore it. And what happened at the same time, I called the councilman, and the councilman, we couldn't get in charge with the councilman at all, because he wouldn't return our call. But they went on and passed a building permit for him to build on my property, which he's doing now. And we have, I have, I have a deed, and he also have a deed and title. Now, his deed is a transfer deed. My deed is legal deed. Now, which one is supposed to be right? That was a question that I had, because see what it is, think about it. What's happening right now, that I'm looking at right now, is they built a lot of houses out there in that area, and that's around Fern, Fern and Brick Church Pike, the areas that I'm talking about. We're starting to have anything to do with that, but this same gentleman is building out there. And what it is, it used to be all black territory out there, and what's happening now, those developers coming in and putting those prior price houses where people have been there for, well, I said for, from, from 30 to 40 years, or maybe 60 years, it's like the property I own. I've been on my property ever since 1973. I bought it from Mr. Moncrey's in Goodlesville. Mr. Moncrey's also, when he sold me that property, he sold it with a deed and also with a title. And his title was made up by a lawyer, so what it is, what I'm saying, what I don't understand the system is, because I'm 80, I'm not a lawyer myself. But what I'm trying to understand, is it over for me?
Yeah, you need to finish up, sir, but.
What I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is this.
Give you a few seconds.
His, his was made up by a lawyer. Mine was also made up by a lawyer, but at the same time, it was, my lawyer's Johnson out of Stoneville downtown. And his lawyer was.
We think we understand the issue. We'll hand it over to our director.
Well, let me, let me just say that.
He's already done building on the property now. I mean, you know.
But I, I believe the, the property that, sir, that you're talking about is over on Brick Church Pike?
That's the one.
Okay, but that's not the ones that are on.
No, I know that. He explained that to me, and I, I was, I was trying to make myself clear on that.
So it's not, it's not in regards to any of these items?
It was his idea. It was, it was his idea. I asked him, should I bring that up? Now, I brought this up before, before the building commission, the top people that's owned the building commission, everybody, but they didn't see that. And I'm trying to figure out, if these are recorded, I can Metro make a mistake and the deeds, you got a deed department down on Eighth Avenue, and at the same time, they got people over out here in this area here to check on it. How would he get by doing that? At the same time, I'm saying myself.
Well, I, I think what we can do is, is that we can meet with this gentleman and try to figure out what the, the issues are with the deed over on Brick Church Pike. It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with this case.
No, 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 no. He explained it to me. I just want to make myself clear on that.
Okay.
Yes, you know how it is, when you get 80, you know, you know, it's a funny thing. I got my best friend with me today, you know what it is? That's my brain. My second brain tell me, see if we can straighten it out. My other brain said, "Food, I don't know if you're going to be able to do it or not."
Thank you, sir. So, just to clarify the record, this is not one of the pieces of property that we're considering. Is anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And how about we start with you, Commissioner? Haggendeers.
Haggendeers, Marty?
Haggendeers. I didn't say Marty. Haggendeers. It took a while to figure it out.
I got a little confused now. Where are we? We're on number 16. No one's speaking in opposition or in favor of this.
I would point out that we had it on the consent agenda.
Okay, and it got removed. Okay. But I'm just going to listen now, see if anybody has any other questions.
Well, let's, how about this? Does any of the commissioners have anything that they'd like to say to add? Seeing none, let's go ahead and get a motion to, a motion from the commissioners, if that's okay.
Make a motion to approve a staff recommendation.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Ayes have it. All right. And we will...
Sorry. Chairman, can somebody make sure that we've given him contact information for our office?
Thank you for coming down. We are, no historic parks. Commissioner Diaz, any update? Nothing on the executive committee? And is there a legislative update? Councilman? No.
Is anybody working around here?
Anybody working around here? No. I hope you all enjoy the rest of your beautiful day, and is there a motion, a chairman? Where's the chairman?
No, okay. Nobody around here.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.